Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Today is August 1st. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02, and I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you please. Thank you, and I'm watching all the town employees leave as they happily skip off into the evening light. Yeah, well, they're running by now. Roll call. Maureen, can I ask her for roll call?
June Daly has asked to be excused. Andre Lou Millard here. Diane Jarsey has asked to be excused. Timothy Ziegma.
Here.
Ryan Rogan.
Here.
Joan Bealy.
Here.
Scott Hamel. Hear from him. We'll just leave him in, that will mark him excused if he's here in the next few moments. Michael Pashak. John Diken.
Present.
Steve Biala Jr.
Whoa, baby, Steve. Steve's rolling it. Yeah, well, I have, I have three commissioners down and out, so I think I'll ask the three alternates to all step in. So John, Steve, Michael. Yeah, what are the odds? So let's buy a lot of ticket. Okay, approval of the minutes. This is interesting, as it is August 17th, 2023. We finally caught up to our last.
We're working on, we're still, as you know, per our discussion last month, we're just plugging along at the last few that were needed to be caught up on, and hopefully it'll only be a couple more of these. But as stated, they do take at least, you know, twice as long as the meeting for them to be typed in the first place, and then another, then we proof them, so that's another.
Yeah, God bless them.
Other periods, so.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the August 17th, 2023 minutes, and are there any questions, corrections, concerns?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Ziegma. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Millard for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this supposed to move July 18th, 2024. Have we all had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any corrections, omissions, or what's, how are we all feeling about July 18th, 2024?
A motion to.
Approve?
Approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegma. Has submitted?
Has submitted.
All right, and do we have a second?
Second.
Who got that second? Oh, Mr. Diken, for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed to move? Okay, so recused, excused from the minutes. Yeah, yeah, from the minutes of July 18th would be Andre Millard. Okay, receipt of the new applications and scheduled public hearings as required or necessary. We have a site plan application of La Province Realty of LLC and Wheezy LLC to construct a 7,441 square foot expansion of an existing auto facility, Shaler Honda, at zero and 11 New Burton Road in the CCD one zone. And I guess we have to suggest a date is what, September 19th?
We do have to have time to notice the adjournment.
Excuse me one second, Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself in this matter.
Okay, all right.
Just for the record.
All right, for the record, Mr. Diken is accusing himself. Okay. It won't be long.
We do have to wait to, you know, we have a time period in order to do the necessary referrals for applications that, but another town. This application, actually, the property is in both our town, Berlin, as well as in New Britain, so.
Okay.
So that's what the date is kind of pushed to the 19th.
Are we sure the 19th is gonna do it, or do you think we should push it out further point next year?
Make a motion to 91924.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ziegma, and for a second. Okay, Ms. Millard, for the discussion on this, all those in favor? Aye, this supposed to move, and Mr. Diken can come back in. All right.
We do, this week, we received another application. If you don't know, that Ashley was able to copy the application in time, but today we have to receive. That is mixed use wholesale distribution center, retail and restaurant with drive-through redevelopment, site plan with special permit application of Calco Construction and Development Incorporated at 466 Deming Road, 337 Berlin Turnpike, and 51 Worthington Ridge in the BT1 zone. This is the property at the corner of the Berlin Turnpike and Deming Road that was industrial surplus, the rug place, yeah, so. I'm, Wetlands is anticipating to, we're thinking it's well into Wetlands for this month, so perhaps either September 1st or the September 19th.
Can we go back? What's this for? What, what are they?
Redevelopment of that site that has industrial surplus on it. It was three properties. You rezoned them to BT1 a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And now they're coming in with a development plan. It's going to include a fast food restaurant as well as redevelopment with the utilizing the existing building and new uses and new parking and drives and everything.
Is there any housing involved in that?
Do not believe so.
Okay, so it's just basically.
Application, but I don't think it has any housing. There may still be the opportunity on portion of the site, because it's really confined towards the westerly side of the site. It's all the way to the plaza that's behind it, or east of it, so.
Okay.
Quite a large parcel.
So it's, it's different than the puzzle that was brought in there for the zone change?
Right, at the time of the zone change, there was discussion of.
Station.
Gas station could be. Yeah, kind of a.
Recharging.
Station. Development of multiple use.
Yeah, so that one, bye-bye.
Uses, it's just, I mean, I think the main use is now, or the, the new focal use will be the fast food. Again, along with retail and some wholesale.
Fast food.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, what's the, what's the feeling of the commission? Any questions or?
Motion to go to 91924.
I want a 919 with the suggestions.
919, okay, 2024. Do we have a second? Mr. Ziegma has a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, a moot. Commission business, bond reduction, releases, task afford, 250 Webster Square Road. We have the request for release of erosion control bond.
So this is a $15,180 bond is being held for soil erosion controls. The construction is complete. The CO has been issued. There's a site bond in place. We did find that there's a lingering silt fence in one area, so therefore we're recommending release be subject to the silt fence removal, so if you approve it, we'll not actually allow it to be released until the silt fence is removed, but the property is stabilized. I did discuss it with engineering, and they're fine with that.
All right, any questions?
I'll make the motion that the bond be released subject to silt fence removal.
All righty, we have the motion by Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Millard, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, a moot. Waiting for Michael to jump in there. Still gotta get it going. Okay, Reservoir Hills LLC, Reservoir Roads, request for release of the planting bond.
Okay, so you do have in your packet a report on this. This is one of, we discussed the fact that we're going through older bonds, and Mr. Kokomo also did actually reply to the town by requesting this release. Oh, here we go. Basically, I found, if you look at the staff report, which is in your supplemental package, I brought up pictures from 2019 Street View, because when I went out, I didn't actually take pictures. What I did find was that it, the bond was is for $3150, $3,150. It was specifically for the area along Reservoir Road at the corner of Lot 20, of 26 Gianna Lane, which is the house on the southeast corner. The area is very mature with lovely trees. The owner has been in the house since 2012. It's been the same owner. I think he's, they're also pretty good at landscaping. It has mature trees, shrubs, shrubs, as well as grasses. I wasn't able to determine if it's exactly as for the landscape plan that the developer would have had to originally put in, but the older shots in 2019 show that it's, it appeared as though those plantings had been done by the 2013 Street View, and the note on that plan said, hold for one year. So I think this is ready to be released.
Okay.
Look good, and it certainly creates a buffer.
Yep, and everyone seems to be satisfied.
And I did, engineering did incur and agreed with the, our inspection.
Okay. Commission, questions or anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to release the bond.
Okay, Mr. Rogan has the motion. Do we have a second? Wow, okay. So Michael, hold on, I'm gonna say your name, Hoshkuk. Okay, thank you, has the second. And further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, a moot. 873 Farmington Avenue, Coconut Brothers Associates, request for bond release of the site bond.
Okay, this one's a little more.
Tricky?
Tricky.
Yeah, yeah.
Good word. That is the existing, the 873 Farmington Avenue, and in 2009, they got an approval for a site plan that made some modifications to that building. Doesn't it? Reservoir Hills was one year, the 873 was the other year. Somehow my notes on this disappeared from my screen, so, but you should have the staff report. In eight, in 2009, they put on an addition. They had some planting required and fencing that was outstanding at the time of CEOs, and that was bonded for. In the meantime, we had litigation that resulted in a settlement case that includes 873 Farmington Avenue and with 861 and Newport Realty. The rear of the property where there was some landscaping and the side, the west side of the property where there was fencing has to all be removed for the settlement plan that was approved for that, so that's all actually been removed from the property and therefore no longer required. The front planting seems to be compliant. I didn't, wasn't able to immediately find a planting plan that was specific to the types of plants, just the notes that said some tomato plants needed to be switched out with shrubs, and a street tree needed to be put in. The street tree was put in. The the one tree that was mature was taken out due to sightlines, as I understand, coming out of Joel's driveway or that area. And the whole property is expected to be redeveloped in accordance with that settlement agreement. So therefore, I think the 2000 bond that goes with the previously approved plan at this point is not appropriate. If they don't move forward with that plan for some reason, if that doesn't come to fruition, and again, some of the work is work with Newport in order to put in the parking lot at 55 and the driveway at 861, then non, not restoring in accordance with the plan, or as modified by the commission in the future, would turn into a zoning enforcement issue in order for them to then put those plantings in properly. So I don't think the bond on an old plan is appropriate.
Okay, I think so.
Mr. Ziegma seems like he has some questions.
Yeah.
This property. I know there was stipulation settlement, everything else, but that has not happened. And I don't like going to a zoning enforcement situation because the applicant doesn't care about zoning enforcement. That, my opinion, I say that, it's my opinion. And I would, I would recommend to keep the, the bond until that settlement is completed. And if you didn't, if they didn't, you didn't go out, someone didn't go out and check the plan, which now, we include all the stipulations now that were on the plan pan, and that's my big thing, been that way since we started putting all the stipulations on the plan, is that someone goes out there with the plan and looks. Don't drive by and say, it looks good.
Oh, I'm sorry, so to, to, for, I guess, restate, and I did find my notes now. What I found was there were shrubs on the side and to the rear, and the fence on the side, so each side, rear, that had been taken out for the site work that is ongoing with Newport.
Okay.
So the, and the fencing, so the bond has landscaping trees, landscaping shrubs, and a fence. And those are removed for the current construction. So they wouldn't be able to be found there because they're removed for the construction that is with 861.
Like, that's, that's the reason we have a bond, isn't it? Because if there's.
So the bond would be for the new construction. There would, should be, a bond should be replacing it that is specific to the construction that relates to the new, new plan.
If, if there's a bond in place, I don't, I don't care whose bond it is, Newport or Kokomo. If there's a bond in place for what's not there from the plan, I don't have a problem, because the bond will be pulled and done. The stuff will be done, but if it goes down, back to a zoning enforcement thing, which every time there's a zoning enforcement thing, it becomes a problem. And, and things are done, and it's, well, it looks okay now. They filled in some wetlands, but you know, it looks okay now. You know, I, I just don't want that happening anymore, because, because that seems to be a, a thing on most of the properties now. So if there's a bond in place, I don't, you know, let's go cover the new construction, or what's not done.
That bond can't be in place until they're asking for the CO for the Newport construction, or 861, or 873 for the new construction, because we get an ENS bond during construction, and we can't get the site bond until it's time for, until the project, they want to call it complete, so dispute by.
So then, then we.
So I guess I'm trying to.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm, if I'm following you correct, then I think this bond should stay in place until we get another bond for the new construction, because that's not in place.
I have a question. Is the bond for Kokomo or for Newport?
This bond was a Kokomo bond for 873.
Okay, so.
But in accordance with the Newport plan that had site work, you remember, there's an easement in the rear.
Yeah.
Been a lot of plans.
So.
Well, the last, last plan given.
Yeah, so basically what happened is that.
And it's, in the rear of 873, there is a strip that has an easement, and that's to work with the parking with 855. I mean, with 55 steel.
Yeah.
New residential buildings, and the parking and drives that will go in accordance with the stipulation for judgment with Newport's 861, the whole project, actually, and Kokomo's 873 building. The drives on the side is where the fencing seems to have come out, and that was required for Newport to do their work that they've done so far. So they can't, the, the developer can't have them, the owner of 873 can't have them in place, because they had to be removed for the construction.
All right, so.
Same with the plantings in the back.
So there was a bond in place, so Kokomo put the stuff up. Newport took it down, because they had to do their development. And now he wants a release on the bond that was put up, I mean, the stuff that was put up and taken down? Is that basically what it comes down to?
I think I'm following you. I think that is the.
Well, why would he?
Put in.
But there's different plantings for the new plan.
But why would he do that if Newport, Newport construction was gonna be going back there and taking it down? No, I don't think so.
I agree, I agree.
Create a Newport construction project?
No.
This is 2009.
Okay.
But, but there was all tandem.
That was.
Well, in 2009, that was way before this project was even conceptualized, so he wouldn't know that Newport was coming in to take his fence down. So it sounds like he met the terms of the bond back in 2009 by putting the fence up, maybe not perfectly.
So it wasn't released in, this is the one that wasn't really, did you have the file? In the, knowing the, in the envelopey thing. One of those, one of those sticking out there, probably is that one.
This is just a.
The whole thing.
The seizure thing to me of covering the town and not getting to zoning enforcement.
Enough to get any more complicated, but I guess when we had, didn't we have a settlement on this property too?
Yeah.
Does that affect this, this bond at all?
Well, it wouldn't affect the bond itself, but it affects the 2009 approval is changed by the newer approval. Which permits, I believe, were applied for, but they've been held up, the remediation between the properties. There is the bond was revised down to the current amount of $30. The bond was revised down to the current amount of thirty-five seventy in two thousand ten.
What was the was was the money?
One of the two was not released, but I think it was there is about one word, but I want to make sure. And again, your decision is is fine. I just want to make sure that while understanding the same.
Yes, very um. Convoluted.
Which. You know, has the potential to expire and not come to fruition. However. The items were installed and were removed based on that construction, so allowed to be removed. You know what I mean? So it was.
I think that's the part that confuses me, the removal part.
If what if this does, this doesn't come to system, so we don't get any of the planning.
Need to get the trucks back there. Say again?
So he, the the bond was reduced in two thousand twenty. What was left for him?
No, two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
About the a year, about a year after, so it's looking me, it's thirty-five twenty. No, that's more than the maintenance amount. And I'm sure. escaping topsoil seeded mulch was removed. Trees and shrubs and the fence still had to be put in in two thousand ten. I don't know when they finished construction and got occupancy. I don't. That's because it was already a building.
Did it get its occupancy? That's that's one question.
And Mr. Dyke can have a question.
So I know that at least three of us, I don't weren't on this commission at, I think when the stipulation um was consummated. Maybe we can have a little bit more of a background on what's going on here because some of this is kind of going over my head. Because I'm just not as familiar with the history as as some of our esteemed commissioners here.
Esteemed. Gosh.
No, 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 no. I wasn't here, the two thousand.
I don't know.
Okay, so. Thousand ten and and I'll go back to the stipulation in a second. In two thousand ten um Director Riggins indicated. The dumpster is not screened, the landscaping is not according to plan, several trees are not planted. No landscaping around the building and tomato plants have been planted where permanent landscaping was required. The fence between the property and the drain doctor has been installed in the wrong location and the wrong size. No street number for dwellings, parking lot not striped and oil tank outside is not shown on the plan. So some of those items aren't the items as listed on the bond sheet. So the bond sheet was specific to. The top seeds, topsoil seed or mulch, the trees and shrubs and the fence. Um the fence, like I said, for the construction. Here's to have been removed. I didn't, wasn't able to find. A site plan that showed the fence. Hold the, I think I had to put it back in the building department file because it wasn't in file and that's where I looked at it from. Um but. This was basically the building as. That's what I was able to find on the building and there were pictures. The side. Next to some mechanical things that showed tomato plants. Trees drawn as belonging there. So that's. Oh, yeah, they are. Pictures I was able to find from two thousand ten. But they don't really identify what's. And I can pass them around if you like, but it's not really identifying what's wrong, not circled or anything I'm just seeing. So um with the new plan. I'm not talking, I can't find it. You can't get on to drive, right?
Since two thousand ten, the building was modified again.
That's what we put, okay, so. The town in Newport are taken to port. And I'm sorry, I'm not in my speaker. Um and. There was a settlement plan agreed upon that incorporated eight seventy-three. In kind of to. Interdepend on eight sixty-one, which is everyone's familiar with Joel's building. You bring up the GIS.
That's.
For the street view, actually.
The old.
Might be better. Um so you have Joel's building, which is isolated from the development. Eight seventy-three is this building we're discussing. And the next building over that mirrors Joel's before you get to the train station parking lot and trap have it on the tracks is eight sixty-one. Um the settlement plan calls for realignment of what was the driveways there. So that the parking for eight sixty-one and eight seventy-three enter and exit through the same driveway. Driveways in front of eight seventy-three get closed off. And an addition is put on eight seventy-three that includes a restaurant and residential components. Um on Joel's side of the building with a front patio and new landscaping that was shown on those plans. And the they'll you the those two buildings next to each other will use a single driveway with parking in the rear. And on the side of of or as eight sixty-one, I think eight sixty-one still is parking on the side. I'm not sure. So they're kind of an integrated plan. The rear of eight seventy-three. Had. Some. Property line issues and whatnot, so there's some cross easements there for. Construction and I think for the parking spaces to be compliant. Um that's that, it was a couple of years ago. Since I've studied the all the nuances of that plan, but that's the gist of it.
So I guess my thinking would be um. I mean, since the bond was reduced in two thousand ten, I mean, it must have been satisfactory enough. Or I mean, in the last over decade, um the town hasn't had to pull the bond. And now we're dealing with new project that is impacting the area where the bond would have um been enforced anyways. And for their CO, they need a new bond to deal with whatever plantings or fencing has to go in that area. Um so personally. Because of the amount of time and it sounds like with the new project going on, that's going to be impacting the area and that will be bonded. Um I'm comfortable making the motion to release the bond.
Okay, we um, okay, we have a motion to release. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Ziegma for discussion. Go ahead.
Well, my my question, when when I, when she clarified here. The fence was was not correct, fence was not in the right spot. So that had, when it was inspected. So that had to be taken down anyway. Because it wasn't in the right spot for the drain doctor and whatever you said. And then the plantings weren't in there, they had tomatoes and then the the bushes and stuff weren't in there in the. In the side there and in the back. Okay. I understand that the the fence had to come down because it was in the wrong place. Newport did something nice with taking it down, I guess. But the rest of the items that the two thousand ten. Has not been addressed. You know. And I I just.
Alright.
It's it's just how this this procedure goes on most of the time. And and it's this, I mean, if whatever the commission feels, I'll go with the commission, but the uh. I guess if there's supposed to be plantings in there. And not in there, at least those items could be addressed and then the bond released.
Yeah, so what do we, is there any way just to roll this over to whatever the new bond is or what?
So bonds are, to the best of my understanding from conversations with um. Our counsel um Denofrio. Um bonds are very specific to the items that they're listed to be for. So this is the building prior to that develop that. Two thousand nine application is being shared on the screen now. We're looking at the street, Google Street View. And that's in two thousand nine, right?
What is that?
And you go to the two thousand eleven view. Anybody remember when it looked like that?
Yeah, that's Pa- Pavel's guess decision.
By two thousand eleven.
Oh, so he put a second floor on it.
He put the second floor on this, the trees had been put in the front for the that parking, the trees were along the side. I don't really know where the fence would have been. And I just don't see where that belonged, although maybe one of the other street views, when I clicked through the street views, getting to.
Well, there's a fence.
Current day.
I think.
Do you see a fence somewhere that I'm not?
I thought I saw it in that one.
And that was back when there was a machine shop back there, so that. That could have been where.
Now, this is two thousand thirteen. So after the bond wasn't released, but you can see there's a street tree there, there's another.
Yeah, whole street.
There still wasn't a tree, street tree in that other island, which is where I think the other street tree was supposed to be. But again, I didn't fi- immediately find a plan that showed me landscaping. This is by sixteen, you see the plants along the side of the building on that side. And yeah, it is October, a different time of the year. And then this is where everything has basically been ripped out for to current day. I think twenty twenty is the most recent view or did you have a uh? So again, Newport hadn't done their, you know, obviously the dumpsters there, they're just starting their work.
But do we know what type of uh fence it was? Was it a chain link fence?
All I have is that.
I remember there was a lot of chain link.
It was probably chain.
All along the back securing the town property to the rear when we took that factory down. And um the brown field there, that the whole rear had chain link. I believe it was chain link. I know, I remember the gate had a chain link section. I don't know that the whole length of it was chain link, but that's my recollection. It was a secured site. Sure, that was on town property.
Alright, well, we have a motion, we have a second, we're still in discussion, folks.
Again, Michael. Your decision from what you're seeing, I just got the request and we're.
It's complicated because. Because it's just still not done. So I guess it's a question of legally, how do you proceed and still get it done?
Well, the bond, the bond is, bond is ten years, right? And then it, then you gotta pull it. If it's not done in ten years, you gotta pull it. Five years for start construction.
Five years for construction.
Well, but then you're allowed extensions.
Right, right.
So they go along with them, extensions and that, and right now the statute is extensions are basically up to nineteen years.
Wow.
In some cases.
Nineteen years.
Correct, right? You don't know off the top of your. You know, by reviewing these slides and the and the pictures, you know, I. Was under the impression the work had been completed without the request to release. And now it's been removed for the next, the redevelopment. Um however. I the 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 point. Of, well, what if they don't? Do the redevelopment then, and that's where where I was going back to. Well, if they don't do the redevelopment, then certainly the pi- the property has to be restored. That would be a normal, you know, course of business. Somebody starts construction and doesn't ever finish it. It's not really the same. In my, my understanding is that's not necessarily the same bonding. Because the bonding would have been eligible for release one year after completion.
Yeah, but if he, if he put the stuff in and then it was taken out. Because of Newport, why didn't he ask for the bond before the stuff was taken out? Why didn't he ask to have the bond released?
I don't know if there's been any times in the last two years he's asked for bond back. I don't know because we've been dealing with so many issues that we have wrangled the number of. Of inspections of, you know, properties we could handle at any given time. I can't say for sure whether that request was made or not, but as we did um know. Let's say the last meeting when you released the bond from ninety-five, we told them the bond, anybody remember what that bond was? We're going through bonds, we're trying to say we have this amount here, this amount. There's bonds that have never been requested by developers.
Was this housekeeping where you found the bond and you requested, you reached out to him to ask?
I don't.
Or is this this something?
I don't think so, but he might have seen it because he did see a bond sheet. He's also asked um over. Time um for the finance department to tell him what he has outstanding bonds on.
So does he now have a bond in place to finish whatever it is after Newport Realty, that sort of thing?
No, we don't get the say bond until after the construction.
But that's on Newport Realty.
No, he'll have a say bond for his work as well. What? Because he has an addition that basically fills in. This parking lot, the parking lot you're looking at now, the paved land. Between the yellow building and Joel's building will basically be a two-story. Two and a half. I think so.
So is he gonna have a landscaping?
Fill out that whole thing. Yeah, yeah, I don't know if you remember, but a section comes out towards the street. That is that restaurant and then there was a patio. Extend in front of the existing building.
So will he have a bond for landscaping on that?
At that time.
Will he have a bond for the landscaping that he's missing? In other words, when you compare the two plans. And you're going to see the fences go on, the tomato plants are grown and all the other stuff. Will this new bond that's going in place or this addition encompass all the work that he's missing off the first?
It was redesigned. The landscaping was was redesigned for the new construction. Because that all will be green or patio way as parking in front. Will be green patio and walkways. And all the parking is on the left side of the building up and in the back. On the new plan.
Can you remember when that new plan come in? Is it four years, five years ago?
Um I think it's four.
Four years. He's got a year to come, to start it.
Yeah, but as I said, we know that the permits were paused. For remediation work that's ongoing.
Okay, so John has a question. I'm sorry.
Would it make sense?
Know the answers to that.
Would it make sense to table this matter, maybe get Mr. Kokomo in here and or maybe get some more information?
From engineering.
I'll try to get the the. Have available for us to easily pull up or make copies of the basic layout or the new construction.
I mean, I don't want to.
Well as.
I don't want to.
We'll do a deeper dive. All the the plans that were all downstairs were sent out for scanning. And so we don't have full access to those yet. Um so I'll see what I can find because we do have some of them back.
Are you gonna, okay.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion and instead of make the motion, the table is to our next meeting.
Let's make a point of order. I think the best thing for you is to keep your motion and then we table. At least that's my understanding of how best to proceed.
Well, no, I think we have to withdraw the second and the first and then there has to be a motion. I think it has to be a separate motion.
Oh yeah, I'll make a separate, I'll just.
Because otherwise, if. Yeah, if his motion stands, then we have to vote on it.
No, so the the tabling can only be of an active motion, so the motion would remain. That's Robert's roles, but I mean, if if we have a different, if we have a, if we have a correct, correct, if we have a different, well, the other option is just to continue it. Yeah, that's okay. Alright, that's mine.
So.
I think that's what he meant.
Yeah, that's what I meant by table, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Believe is where we're at.
So you're, alright, no. Alright, so.
Withdrawn, motion withdrawn.
Who had the second?
I did.
Okay, so you were to withdraw the second, right? Okay, fine.
I'll make the motion to continue until our next meeting.
Fine, we have a second. For the motion to continue.
I'll second.
Alright, thank you, John. Further discussion, all those in favor, I suppose so move. Who knew that was going to be complicated? No, I wanted to get home by eight. What time we have? Fifteen minutes. Alright, discussion on an act lab.
So they, so this this will make up for it. They have asked to be continued. They have asked to be continued. They couldn't able to attend this evening.
All right, good. Do I need a motion on that?
It is, um, a, um. Facility that does testing of cannabis products.
Is that okay?
Is that all within our?
So Ed Warily, I think, um. It's best to, because it took a lot for us to understand. What the item is, discussions with corporation counsel, she believes it's, um. Appropriate to bring this discussion to the commission.
Yeah, but soon we.
Doesn't fall under, or rather, um. I, I don't wanna speak for her, but doesn't seem to fall under the prohibition because it's a something different. So. They wanted to bring it to the commission to hear about, talk about and understand before. We, um, gave that direction.
Okay, so.
Now if she.
Do we have a motion?
She's online. I don't know if she wants to type in or care.
Well, we're gonna continue it, right? Okay, so do we need a, a motion on that?
Make a motion to continue.
Okay.
Item six B, the discussion of ACT lab.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Dyken. We have a second. A second by Michael Pushu. Okay, and further discussion, all those in favor, I, those opposed, so moved. Discussion on charging station installations. This makes me giggle.
So you got that in your package. Um, I believe you got information about the, um, a, a request. From, um, we had a quick discussion a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago. About, um, charging stations and whether they would be accessory to. Uh, retail use in other places where, um, someone wanted to, but rather vacuum cleaners. Car vacuums and it was determined, you know, there are standard discussion landed with. Their, uh, customary accessory use at. Gas stations and auto uses, but not at something like a convenience store. You then received this, a letter from the, um, and you might have actually been in the last pack. Um, a letter from the, um. Owners of the convenience store at the corner of Newton, what was seven eleven? It looks like.
Yeah.
But it's not been a seven eleven in a decade or more. Um. And yeah, I don't, I think something like, it might have changed its name too, cause it's changed its name a number of times. Um, and he, he provided a letter as to why. Charging station and or, and vacuums would be, um. Could be, yeah, could be considered accessory. One of the other item and, and the half of that is the charging stations themselves. Where now the legislation is that new construction, um, new developments rather. Have to put in the infrastructure for charging stations, assuming that some. Number of parking spaces in the parking lot will require charging, chargers. Um, the development doesn't, and in our interpretation of that statute that the. Charging station does not have to be installed, but they have to put in the infrastructure when they build a new development. The, um. We are now, we've started to get the requests for some charging stations to be installed on parking lots. So. What this is, is whether you want us to start looking at. Um, putting in place some regulations for those charging stations. I was hoping I could have this week done some. Work. It seems to me I've gone back by some places that have rather, um, ornate and elaborate charging stations in their parking lots. And then you have others that are simply. A post that looks like. You know, it's just a plug on a post. It's very, very simple.
Looks like the old speakers in the driving movies.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a great analogy. Um, and so, but. What I thought were charging stations at a Target I went by, it looked like they had big arms and.
Oh, yeah.
Quite a bit more to them. And that, um, prompted whether you want to have. Parameters with regard to where those are, are placed and or you want us to treat them like a electrical permit, an accessory. Um.
I'm not.
Use and how to handle them. And then again, revisit his, his specific. Request for whether he can have, um. Vacuums and charging station and the placement.
Maureen, I have a question. This is a convenience store where people run in, grab a half a gallon of milk or a pack of cigarettes and they go.
Yeah.
They don't leave their car there where they run in and grab their milk and charge it. I don't quite understand what his purpose is here. Um, you know, park, uh, you park and ride or where you share, you share your rides. That's one thing. Um, I don't, I don't even see the, the reasoning to even put a charging station or a vacuum.
Yeah, I agree.
It doesn't make any sense to me. It's.
Charge takes a half hour to an hour to.
You gotta guess. It's gotta be more, more than that. Sometimes it's four or five hours.
If it's empty, it takes a long time, but you know, if you're just topping it off like gas can, hey, it might take a half hour, forty five minutes, but.
Hey, if I'm gonna do that, I'd do it at home.
Maybe he bought an electric car. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's the point.
Well, he could put it in the corner of the building and start himself up.
Yeah, I think like the condo, uh, buildings.
Well, that's all different. That's, that's all different.
That there should be regulated.
Hold on, Jim.
Them.
Jim.
I, again, I, those are, that was inspected and there was no room found. There was no gathering, that, there was no smoking lounge.
Did you try, did you try like churning the?
Two of our, at least two of our inspectors went out and.
Did you bring the dogs?
They found a room that was closed that had the cigars in it. But not a lounge, a smoking lounge. They had, found a secret room that was closed, a humidor room.
Yeah. I said, have you stomped on the floorboards?
Yeah, I, I don't know whether they went further, but the room described.
The candlestick.
He did inspect that. It was immediately done.
He put that much effort and I wouldn't be angry about it.
All right, okay. All right, so we know our, our thoughts on that. Okay, so discussion, are we just tabling that? Charging station installation, so we're not.
So and a repeat of this, um, with the vacuums.
Yeah.
For, they're an accessory at an auto use, not an accessory at.
At a convenience.
Types of store.
It just adds to the.
But, um, I, if you have thoughts on. I'll, because we are starting to get the, the electrical permits for charging stations. Um, and the ones we've seen. In the past, I thought it was a no brainer that they were accessory, you know, our, our conclusion in zoning was, oh, that's accessory at a, um. Um, industrial parking lot, at a residential parking.
A park and rider and train station.
But now we're starting to see the applications come in for other, other places. So we would like feedback if you want us to continue.
All right, well, yeah, we're good.
Locations at.
Continue this.
Accessory or if you want.
All right, all right.
For the motion, I, I just have a question about the charging stations. I mean, to charge up a full, a car full, I mean, it's not cheap.
No.
I mean, is there a meter on these things or?
No, it's credit card.
But I believe you have like a, a card or.
Credit card.
Okay.
You use it to, you, there's different services. So some of the charging stations are, um. You, you have to have the compatible card to the charger.
Right.
And so it goes with the service.
So the likely.
The way I was explained to me by somebody that owns a car, owns an electric car.
Mm-hmm, good luck.
Not an expert.
So the likelihood, it would be more like what Commissioner Zigmund saying, someone's just topping it off for half, a, a half an hour probably. And then it's not gonna be there all night where they're basically, you know, trespassing at this point for four hours.
I mean, I don't. Night. It may end up where you have somebody that's not on that onsite utilizing it. It becomes a.
So I think I don't.
Destination instead of the store being the destination. And that is a viable reason.
There's very good regulations in, in, uh, Maryland and, uh, Virginia on, on charging stations. And they have charge stations, they gotta have a roof. Or because they keep it out of the rain when it's, when it's thing. Uh, so there's some big regulations down south. That thing, so maybe when you're investigating it, you know, maybe that's what you gotta look, look down there and say. What are they doing? Because I seen huge, you know, uh, in a, in a motel, hundred room motel, there's. Paying the charge in chase stations, you know?
Well, that makes sense though.
You know, which, which makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they're staying overnight in an electric car.
Yeah.
This definitely doesn't seem like an access, accessory for that convenience store.
No, no.
Seems like this is something that, um, as times change, we kinda need to start looking at it. So maybe it's like a housekeeping thing.
I'm waiting for us to start beaming around. I wanna step on the platform and say, be me up. Yeah, George, yes. All right, can we go on to public hearing? Oh, do we need to? Yeah, do we have a, um, uh, do we have to continue this, a motion to continue?
There are discussion items, it's.
Okay, all right, no, okay, fine. Moving on to public hearings then.
An abstraction that.
All right, and I'm, I think Mr. Rogan has something to read about the public hearings.
I do.
Yeah, before.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at a regular meeting on Thursday, August first, twenty twenty four at seven P M. The Town Council Chambers, Burlington Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. Special permit use with site plan amendment, application of L P M Holding Incorporated to utilize. The kitchen in EverSource for a school lunch program at one oh seven Sheldon, uh, Sheldon, that's right.
Sheldon.
Sheldon, Sheldon Street. Property Rocky Hill, Rocky River Realty in the O T zone. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department of Burlington Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Dated this seventeenth day of June, twenty twenty four at Burlington, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary. Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, New Britain Herald, legal notices slash classified advertising. Advertising dates of publication, Saturday, July twentieth, twenty twenty four, Friday, July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, posted Burlington Clerk, Thursday, July eighteen, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Well done. We missed that. Okay, public hearing, special permit site amendment, application of L P M Holding Incorporated to utilize the kitchen. And EverSource for a school lunch program at one oh seven Sheldon Street, property at Rocky River Realty in the O T zone. Okay, do we have anyone here to, uh, yeah, okay, I was, which, I was wondering what. You know, I felt bad that you were languishing through this agenda. I imagine we are, and, and entertaining at times too. So if you want to come to the podium, just state your name and address for the record, stretch your legs. And then we'll find out what this is all about, cause I'm quite curious.
Uh, I'm Joe Semler. I represent L P M Holding. I'm district manager with the company, um, and I live in East Haven, Connecticut.
Okay, how was the write-up? Okay. Not too bad.
Um, I come up here all the time. EverSource.
Oh, okay.
M D O T, so.
All right, you should actually move here.
My wife would love to, but. You can't afford it right now.
Oh, not, no, can't afford anything. Uh huh, okay, um.
I'll show you.
All right, so utilize the kitchen. All right, so you guys have a kitchen in EverSource and you wanna use it for the school lunch program. Does that mean you're putting out all those, those kitchen workers at the schools out of business?
The particular kitchens we deliver to, uh, they have their own kitchen workers. We deliver the meals cold, sealed.
Okay.
And they heat them up there. Um, they don't have full kitchens. That's why we're making the food. We're not even really making the food there. That's why we're packaging the food at EverSource and taking it up to other locations. Cause they only have basically an oven there and a holding facility, so they can't even make their own meals.
So before you did this, how did they do their meals?
Um, they were, they did get them from some larger companies that do this. Um, those companies have dumped them.
They what? They dumped them?
Walked in one day and said, nope, we're not doing anymore.
Oh, nice.
We had three weeks to do the first school.
Can you lean into the?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Sorry, it's a recording.
Okay, yep, yep. Okay. So the, um, the, the schools actually got dumped by these larger corporations. Cause the, the one, the two of the schools that we're doing up in Massachusetts right now were done. As a contract for Boston, so they lost the Boston contract and they lost the Boston contract. They just said, we're not doing any of the little schools now either, so.
All right, so now EverSource, has it always been doing this?
No, we just actually started this in November.
So they're branching out.
Well, so ever, we have a deal with EverSource. We get to use their kitchens and we're mainly a subsidy company, which means they pay us to do their food service, but.
Oh.
Decided they couldn't afford the subsidy anymore, so.
Oh my.
Yes.
Surprised to hear that.
Yeah.
I know, my. I saw my power bill. I was like, what the? Never mind. We're on an open air mic.
Exactly.
We're on hot mic here, people.
So, so right now we basically, um, get the food in from a purveyor. We just repackage it. Um, to single serve containers and then we ship them off in refrigerated trucks to these three schools.
Wow. Okay, commission. Well, is there anyone from the public who'd like to talk about this, either pro or con? That would be your chance. None. Okay, commission. Questions?
So I have to imagine this goes before like the health department and everything?
Yes.
For their approval?
Yes, we have to do a site plan with them and then I actually have to go through the Department of Consumer Protection also. And then. Cause I'm crossing state lines, I actually have to go through federal government also. It's a process.
I, I imagine, I mean, now, so you were doing this already. It's just that now you're taking on, okay.
Yeah, well, now we're taking on, we found out the steps almost afterwards, after we talked to the health department, because we thought we had to talk to the health departments in Massachusetts. Because we were delivering to them.
Okay.
And then it, we took a step back and said, okay, we probably should contact someone here. And then once we did that, we found out the steps we needed to take.
Okay.
So. We're trying to correct our problem.
So you need someone with a food license to go to classes and step to the food.
Well, we already have that at EverSource. So all our managers have to be serve safe certified, which means we already have that. So we actually technically have a food service license at EverSource. This is a different license, almost like a manufacturing license.
Almost like a catering license.
Well, it's not even catering license, manufacturing license.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and we're not manufacturing anything. We're taking it from one container and putting it.
I kinda miss the old days though, where you stood with a tray and there was fish sticks and pizza and the.
We still do all that food. We just repackage it.
No, I mean, it was kinda neat. The people with the hairnets, they'd say, you know, if they liked you, they gave you an extra double.
A lunch lady no more?
No, lunch ladies.
Lunch lady. She actually serves the hot meals.
Oh, she does.
Making them in the back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pizza day was the best at for one high.
Also with the stuffed crusts?
Oh, yeah, yum, yum. Never mind. Also, but those were the days. Those poor kids now, they get the prepackaged thing.
Do, do you know why we have to do the prepackage? Because the regulations are so tough that. The federal government requires certain levels of.
They take the fun out of everything.
So the schools don't get paid and if they don't get paid, we don't get paid.
Yeah, they take.
That's why we have to do it this.
Government takes the fun out of it. No, they really do. So, I mean, actually, uh, it's pretty.
Maureen, do you have any concerns?
Well, I, so I just wanna say a few things for the record and, um. Alexa actually did some of the deep diving on this, so if she might have to correct me if I'm wrong or take over. But I want to make it clear that this is a food menu, so the, in your package, you have the application. They have to give to the state or they're making to the state in order to do this, um, service. And it is an application for food manufacturing wholesale license to manufacture food that's separate from a catering license. And manufacturing is a permitted use in the zone that EverSource is in. At this time, catering is not. So if it's, um, if you look at the staff report, one of the conditions is, um, that we are recommending is that any change to the proposed use. Including a change of license type related to the use of the kitchen, be reviewed for zoning compliance. And that's because if they do. Change their business model and start cooking food and catering it out to, then they might be. Changing the definition of use that they're having and we wanna make sure that, that stays compliant for the zone. Um, they, as you can see, they have to get this wholesale license to manufacture food from the state. Um, and the health district has provided comments with regard to the licensing and food, food use. Um, most of the departments that we brought to had no comment, meaning, you know, if there's any permits required. They'll deal with it during the permitting stage, but they had no comment with regard to the, to the special permit use. Um, and, um. Of course, economic developments comment, what a great thing to do. So utilize base in town. Um, basically also be succinct for him. That's, that's being under.
It's not gonna be a problem.
It does, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's being partially used for EverSource purposes. You guys do some things for Ever.
So we make, uh, we do breakfast, lunch, cafe, and then we do all the catering at EverSource already.
At EverSource or for EverSource's events or whatever, but.
Right.
So that kinda catering, you know, it's obviously the kitchen that they can have. It's more of a. Caterer I was referring to was a caterer that. It's more of a caterer I was referring to was a caterer that operates out of there to do weddings. You know, that kind of thing that would be a change. Um, and it is what is apparently an underutilized space right now. Again, it's a determination the commission has to make and we did not feel we could make it in the.
Yeah.
In the office because it's not directly EverSource. Relatives.
Yeah, and it's just, it doesn't seem to really have any impact, as you said, with the trucks and stuff.
Yeah, it's one truck. We leave about five thirty in the morning and then he comes back about eleven o'clock in the afternoon.
Wow, okay.
Is that picking up in the building more?
No, there's actually a loading dock attached to the kitchen.
Right.
Yeah. Michael, how are you? Any questions?
No.
Sorry, specifically how much trucks go through there every day? No, that's not.
We're, yeah. Yes, Andrea Millard.
Did you have to get any approval from EverSource for this since it's their building?
Yes.
You did? Okay. All right, thanks.
They're, they're the ones who actually signed off on the River Realty that is EverSource.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so that's in your package as well.
Yeah.
And we do require that for any.
I used to work at N. U., so I know when the cafeteria was always busy when we were there, but when COVID came and all the places being developed here on the Berlin Turnpike, everybody would go out. So you could see the, um, popularity of the cafeteria going way down.
Still doesn't do bad, but they're another company that's only requiring our employees to come in on Wednesdays. So Wednesday's our busiest day there.
Wow.
It is being underutilized now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right, so what's the flavor of the commission? Yeah.
I will make.
Go ahead.
I will make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John Dyken. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you. We'll be delivering it shortly. Okay, next up, we have the application of Nicholas Morizo, uh, Colliers International, prepared by attorney Timothy Sullivan at Properties Owned at five five zero by five four Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC in the P. T. One Zone. And yes, go ahead.
So, and I don't.
I'm not going to read the rest of that.
Jennifer, if Attorney Capola wants to pipe in, but the stipulation for judgment with the settlement plan for the commission was approved, that was approved some months ago, was at, went to court this morning and was approved by the judge and I see Ja- Jennifer has, um, unmuted herself, so she may want to run with this.
So.
Good information.
The judge said it's okay, uh, Attorney Capola?
Um, yes, uh, he did, um, um, and, uh, it, it was a good hearing. Uh, he did have a concern regarding the deed restriction. Um, you'll recall that in section, uh, five B. Two, uh, that, that, uh, there was a rather lengthy, uh, paragraph about deed restriction and, and not allowing, uh, further housing on five twenty-two, um, and, uh, with regard to, um, uh, five oh two and five fifty, five fifty-four, um, language about not allowing housing and having complementary commercial uses and so on and so forth. Um, so, uh, the court had, um, and he, Judge O'Handlon did put this on the record. The court had, um, scheduled a status conference to discuss his concerns and, uh, you know, he wanted some information with regard to the status of, of the matter, um, as well as, uh, the status of affordable housing in Berlin. He thought that, you know, the town was close to the ten percent statutory threshold. Um, so I did give a statement um, on the record regarding, you know, the intent of the Berlin Turnpike Development Zone to have a mixed use, um, the reason, you know, for denial of the applications being in part the fact that the commission felt that the application, given, given the commercial use associated and the building supply not being the typical commercial use um, that the commission, you know, was concerned, uh, when they denied the applications, the applications were for housing alone and not truly a mixed use um, because no specific co- commercial use was identified for the smaller parcel at, at five oh two. Um, and then I went, uh, through, uh, just the fact that, you know, the, the applications that were denied were not eight thirty G. Applications. Um, and in fact, you know, they were made under a regulation that does require twenty percent affordable. This isn't an instance where, where, as this sometimes happens in the settling of eight thirty G. Matters, where, um, you know, there's no affordable housing associated with the settlement plan, uh, you know, the, the regulation requires twenty percent and that's what they're doing. They're doing twenty percent. We're getting twenty-one units of affordable housing out of the project. And then I detailed with the help of, um, Maureen and Jim, um, I detailed very specifically where the town is as far as reaching the ten percent threshold. Uh, you know, put on the record the units that have been approved but not yet constructed, the affordable units, the affordable units that, um, uh, you know, the various other projects that we have as well, um, that were anticipating uh, obtaining affordable units through and so forth, including, um, at the very end, uh, the deed restriction of potentially the mobile home park, which is something that I've been working on. So the, the court was very complimentary of the town. Um, and I have not looked to see what the order was, whether it's just a straight granting of the motion for entry of, of stipulated judgment or whether he did in fact write any comments. But, um, you know, he was expecting that we were just going to give an update on numbers. I don't, he didn't, he said, you know, he didn't expect quite the detail that we provided and very impressed with the, um, concerted and sophisticated policy of the town to create affordable housing. Um, so it was very, very positive.
Wow.
A judge said.
Wow.
Yes.
That ought to get him off our backs.
Said it, he said it on, you know, in, in the hearing, the hearing and, and I believe that they actually had us because they, they do provide a link, um, for the public to watch some of these hearings now. That's something that's come out of, you know, with, with these remote hearings and, and offering certain matters for teams hearing. Um, the, there are certain matters that they do, uh, you know, give apps, access to the public to watch. Um, obviously, anybody who inquired, and that's why we published notice, anybody who inquired to get a link to participate and address the court, that's why you know, we receive public comment on settlements and so forth. They, um, you know, they, they allow that, but more broadly, they do televise some of these. So I think we were actually on um, that, that link as well because I know they had us connected. So, um, so it was, it was really, you know, very positive and, and you know, and I said, you know, that, that your effort should be commended. I mean, you, you know, there's been, there's been diligent efforts over decades, um, you know, to meet the threshold and, and, you know, I talked about the more recent, uh, you know, again, the more recent projects, more recent approvals and so on and so forth, but, you know, I could have talked an hour about, you know, all that you've done, including, you know, recently the endeavor to, to amend your regulations. Um, so, you know, and I didn't get into all of that, um, but, uh, you know, I, I, as your counsel, I'm very proud of you.
Oh, that's so sweet.
I really.
Commission, take a bow.
Just.
Thank you.
Tell you, I did sign up for the link to, to watch the, uh, uh, thing, but it was supposed to notify me when it came active. It didn't notify me, so I didn't, I didn't.
So you missed it.
I missed it today.
No. That's all right.
So the recording may be on there. Um, uh, if I find it, I'll send it out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be fine. Thank you. All righty, so we're good with that then, so we don't have.
I, so obviously there's an appeal period, right? Somebody could appeal it. Um, you know, I think maybe we update the agenda that the stipulated judgment was approved um, and just continue the matter, um, you know, to make sure that nobody appeals it.
Okay.
You know, just out of an abundance of caution, I think that's what we did with sixteen seventy-six. It's not a bad idea. Um, it, you know, it's, it's not something I've, I, you know, typically I've done in the past, but, you know, we do have a withdrawal here um, of affordable, you know, an affordable housing application that needs to take place, right? Um, and that hasn't been done yet, so I don't know that I, I take it off your agenda just yet.
Okay, so a motion to continue would be a good thing to do.
I think it's a good idea.
All right.
I have an abundance of caution.
Okay, I will return, entertain.
Do you remember what, uh, the length of appeal period? It's only fifteen days, twenty days.
Um, it's twenty.
Twenty.
Okay. Twenty days.
I, can I add? I don't think we put the appeal period on. I think we just carried, um, an older one.
Oh, no, you don't need to, you don't need to.
But they just kept carrying until the withdrawal was received and the applicant didn't furnish the withdrawal till the appeal period ended.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay, motion to continue by Mr. Rogan. Do we have a second? By Michael Postock. Okay, thank you. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved. I'm, I'm trying to, oh, come on. All right, now we have deliberations, so we have the special permit use site plan amendment for L. P. M. Holding to utilize the kitchen in EverSource for the school lunch program. And we just heard from the gentleman here and, um, um, what are your thoughts on this item, commissioners?
Make a motion to approve. It's just repacking of the food.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Sigma. Do we have a second?
I will second because, um, we have, uh, with staff comment.
Okay. Well, we, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a.
Oh, second for, open up for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion. Okay.
Yeah.
And go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add to that motion, if, uh, Commissioner Sigma would be so kind, was the add staff comment, um, just because of the issue of manufacturing, um, is currently allowed in the zone. If it was become a catering thing, it would have to come back before the board.
And how does? Okay, so the, uh, motion is amended. The second's amended. Any other discussion on this item? And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, so moved. You got it. Okay, good luck. It's just, um, well, it's a different world, right?
It wasn't as hard as you thought it would be.
Yeah, I know. It just took a while to get here, that's all. All right, have a good night. Drive careful, please. Okay, so, and then, of course, we're back to this application for, um, uh, five fifty, five fifty-four Berlin Turnpike, but that's been continued. On to. All right, so we're out of public hearings now and deliberations. Uh, planners' comments.
So I just have a few things.
Okay.
Many things, actually. Um, one of the things we've been looking at, um, I know at the last meeting, we cursor cursory commented on the pickle festival, having been kind of a.
Put us in a pickle, didn't it?
Yeah, so I want everybody to know there have been multiple meetings and they are doing, the same organization, um, is doing the, or company is doing the Made in Connecticut event, which I will say I've been to in other, when it was held in other towns, um, it, I think it was a great event because it gives you a look at what's made in Connecticut and what a great thing to, for Connecticut to have. But we did have an interdepartmental meeting with various departments, the public safety, the fire, fire marshal, fire department, um, health department, police department, et cetera. And then they had a logistical meeting today with the applicant as well and, and the Lions club. So, um, that being said, the, the expectation of attendees that that is not nearly as much and the history shows that it's not as many, you know, it's, it's had a lower
Do I have a question?
Number of attendance anyway, but there, the town should be prepared regardless. Yes.
So on the talking about bonds, is there any way that when we're faced with a new event like this where it's kind of a bit vague, where it could just blow up into something? Is there a bond that we could put in place on the event? Um, you know, to protect the town in case we do have to call and, you know, all this public safety and people like that, so we don't get stuck with the bill?
So they were actually, um, if, if I understand correctly, and that's not my department, but, um, as I understand it, um, the private duty or the officers that get called in the private duty, um, is paid by the applicant, by the event. You know, no matter what it is, if it needs police coverage and, um, these organizers, it, there was a number worked up, as I understand it, um, after the event that they agreed to pay, as far as I understand from the meeting I was at. Again, that wasn't my alleywigs. I, you know, wasn't necessarily in the weeds on it, but, um, that is handled in that manner and it goes through town council. If the, any of that is waived or reduced or anything else, that all goes through town council. It's a decision that they make, um, at the police department's recommendation, if it's a police department funds or what have you. Um, so rather than planning and zoning, um, we are coming from this was the discussion. Now, I think we've discussed with you several times that we've been working since Alexa started on a form that covers both the, well, quality in the first place updated the, um, fairgrounds form for each year because each year they don't have to come back to the commission unless by, by regulation, unless the events change to over two fifty. Yeah, attends. Um, they, the, the Lions have indicated they'd like to look at amending that regulation, but they haven't proposed that yet. They'd like to up that a little bit. Two fifty is pretty good.
Pretty low.
On that, amps on that, uh, that size of the, the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
But at the same time, it was a threshold set and why? You know, is it a number that correlates to some other rules, regulations, thresholds for needing health and safety issues? You know, we want to try to coordinate those. Um, so he's created a form that's much more precise for each event to have the same thing. Right now, we have been getting a very consistent list from them with the same information on it. Each year it looks almost identical to itself each year. But if they have a change of who fills out the form, they might not do it so well. So we created the form instead and that's what they're going to have to submit to us moving forward. Um, they, we then have also, um, Alexa worked on a form for other types of temporary events such as the strawberry festival that you've seen and some of those other things that a couple of years ago you directed. You know, these are ongoing yearly events, so
Yeah.
Form that then we know what's changed. You know, if suddenly you've been running along at five vendors a year or one food truck and now you're turning it into a food truck festival and you're going to have twenty food trucks. The health district, the fire marshal, everybody, the building inspector, everybody needs to know that information. So we've got, we've, um, looked to other towns as well, um, and, and checked with each of the departments. What information do you need in order to have the information upfront? So we have it all in one file and it's disseminated to the same to everybody. Um, just for everyone's, um, peace of mind.
Mm-hmm.
Each of our departments has been in communication with almost all of the organizers for the different events, both on and off the fairgrounds. You know, the fire marshal does talk to the organizer directly, but our file may not have ever gotten it upped or they do have to go to the, the health district. And so the health district might know that they have more food vendors than last year and they were approved initially at five food vendors and they've grown over fifteen years to fifteen food vendors and we still have five on our, because that's what was originally approved. So, you know, this would make it so that everybody's information is the same and updated.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have that is still being developed is that inquiry you had for, um, makers markets. Is that what we call them? Makers markets and or, um, the other being a, a separate, um, type of use being farmer's markets and where those may go into an existing retail space or more likely a farmer's market is going to be asking to go um, in a non-commercial area. They might ask to go on a farm or on a, in, you know, someplace else that there's a vacant parcel. So a park, that kind of thing. So, so we're, we're looking at those as needing a different question because it more likely in a different so. Um, so we're working on all that, putting it all together. Um, so we're working on all that, putting it all together. So as part of, um, some of the issues with the food fest, with the pickle festival, and um, in conversations with the police department, what we're thinking is adding to that a follow-up. Okay, you proposed, you'd have and, and pulling numbers out of a hat here, people, but ten vendors. And you, you expected you're going to have four thousand attendees over the entire weekend. And you ended up by, you know, the, your deadline for people to sign up and be vendors, you ended up with thirty vendors, and you were really successful and sold twenty-five thousand tickets. So we get a follow-up, we get a, a, uh, updates as the event approaches, if it's an event that is changing its model at all, you know, if it hits a threshold, the police department identifying what thresholds there may be, where they have to reevaluate if police presence, if fire truck emergency services are required on-site, and the health district can determine, oh, do I need a couple more sanitarians on duty that weekend, so that they can plan, and then, so that before the event, we have a couple of benchmark dates that they update the town, and then after the event tell us, okay, what was the outcome? So when we're evaluating the project, the same proposal for the following year, we know whether there's been a change, because we want a successful event. We don't want people to have no attend, you know, minimal attendees. We want things to be successful, that's great for the town, it's great for the other businesses in town. Um, but we need to have particularly our health and safety repaired. And traffic.
The traffic is a baby, that was a monster.
And because of the heat, the, the health was a, a, an issue too, because there was, you know, people were getting heat exhaustion or stroke, or whatever you call, whatever happened to them, but it was an issue with hydrated and people being safe as well.
There was no shade or anything for anybody.
So my, my memory was that the pickle festival, the estimated foot traffic was like fifteen hundred, and what did it end up being? Fifty, twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it seems to me like that's more than just, you know, not quite estimating something that's foreseeable. I mean, it's hard for me to believe the pickle festival didn't know that this was gonna happen. So, I mean, I, what you're saying makes a lot of sense to me, but um, I mean, it just seems such an odd thing to have happened. And um, I mean, the represent, this was based on their representation, the, the organization.
No, they did have also, you know, a couple of meetings that I was party to, and then other meetings with the police department, and some of the other safety officials in town, um, with regard to what their pre-sales numbers were, et cetera, and then so therefore by having a benchmark reporting, we're hoping that organizers don't find that occurs to this degree.
How far ahead of the planned event would we start that process?
Um, I think, I think it'll, actually, I think it'll be a much longer ahead depending on the event. You know, if it's, and, you know, and, and really, let's face it, the fairgrounds has pages of events every year, you know, most weekends, as well as other events, and we never hear anything about them. So, we don't wanna become, and same with, they say the strawberry festival running along at the same rate, the new concert that St. Paul's had, you know, we don't wanna become onerous with them having to overly report. That's work for us, as well as work for them, and they're almost always volunteers, not all, not everything is volunteers, but a lot of those types of events are. Um, or second jobs, or people, if they have, if they're a crafter at a fair, they're probably have something else, a lot of the rest of the time. Um, so, um, I, I will most likely be, depending on the time period, you know, new events by regulation at the fairgrounds, oh, you know, that's where we have the specific regulation, are supposed to be provided to the planning and zoning office, and by extension, the commission, if it's a special permit, a hundred and twenty days in advance, and, and a minimum of sixty-five. That's been loosely handled when they have something that comes up, because it, you know, but generally, we easily I believe have met the sixty-five, and they usually give us the list for the year in around February. So, um, I think it would be a matter of the police department. Um, he, they've already done a draft form benchmarks and whatnot, and that's really what it, what it comes down to. If we get an event that is the scope, I don't wanna say the size necessarily, but the scope of something like the Berlin Fair, or like this, where there might be considerations for traffic pattern changes, and, um, and auxiliary parking, and things like that, then that also needs approval from the state, they're changing traffic patterns.
Right.
And doing other things, so they need more time than they do something. So, it's, um, ideally, it's communication and finding those sweet spots of dates that the, um, staff is working on.
I mean, I'm glad it was a successful event, for sure.
Yeah, but it was, has problems.
Yes.
Anyway, okay, thanks for the update on.
I, I got a couple of things. Uh, yeah.
I have others too.
Okay. Okay, uh, well, I'm always driving to work, and I go by that place that had all, those, uh, trailers that are are basically junk trailers, uh, parked across from, uh, the golf place on them in the road, or
You mentioned that a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, yeah, and with that, if you take a ride onto Christian Lane, on the right-hand side, just past the the last manufacturing building, uh, someone's cleaned out a huge lot.
Ross was dealing with that, that, that is in.
And they have signs out there for rentals of parking places for trucks, which never came for us, and there, you know, and so truck parking, uh, equipment parking, uh, any construction stuff, parking stuff, but they filled in a
So I've had a meeting with the new owner, so.
Yeah.
The wetland, the wetlands agent and I, and I think the zoning officer was in the, no, he wasn't in that meeting, but he was.
Yeah, when they put the gate up and had the sign on there, that's when I.
Yes, that, on our radar, thank you.
And the other thing I have is that I, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Crog, uh, had their meeting, not on Thursday night, when our meetings are. And ended up with twenty-seven towns participating, when they only get like four or five. They got twenty-seven towns. So they broke it out into work sessions. Uh, I was in with a work session, like ten other towns, uh, the town of Berlin, and our planning commission got a lot of praise, like Jennifer just said about the judge uh, of our eight thirty G regulations, and our, what we've been doing over the years, and how we've been building up towards that ten percent. They couldn't, uh, praise us better more. The, the head, the head of, uh, Crog, whatever her name is, Heidi. Okay, uh, she was, uh, uh, praising us up and down. Uh, but there has been new monies coming in, grant monies, for the planning and stuff. And we got praised that our, our, uh, plan that we already finished, uh, was finished and printed, and they're using that plan to give to other towns, because other towns haven't even started theirs.
Oh, the P O C D.
Okay, P O C D. Uh, so we're, we're being put out example for the thirty G, and we're putting out, be putting out for the, our plan, uh, which I'm, praise you guys a hundred percent for that. Uh, you know, to be that high up in twenty-seven towns, uh, is a good thing. I was, I was peacocking a little bit when they you know, uh, but, uh, but the monies available now coming in, now, a lot of grant money and a lot of stuff for planning is a, a lot, and I asked them to contact you, uh, with any monies coming in. I know they probably do send that stuff in.
They do send it out, and Jim Mahoney, the economic development coordinator is, he monitors closely.
What she even told, said to me that we recommend that Berlin get on this one, and stuff like that, so, so, uh, any grant money is always good money. You know.
Thank you for that.
Uh, but, uh, so, I, I just noticed on this notice here, the next one's on a meeting night again. Uh, but they are going to change the meeting nights from Thursdays, because most of the towns can't make it on Thursdays. And they're gonna make it on a Tuesday, so, so.
That's cool.
When it does happen, it won't be this meeting, but probably the next one.
I have one thing, just really quick. Um, they're getting camper where it starts on the, I think Bacon Street, it's over by Old Spring, you know where Stone Brick Way is? And the ivy is now growing. Alright, that's it, just.
I, it, it's just light, and people shouldn't have to look at it. So, what I'm going to suggest, and I'd certainly take the comments you have, um, but, um, a couple of meetings ago, I was thinking, you know, we'd be starting to bring up the complaint form, um, so that you guys could write these things down. It would be much easier. That's the way we take in complaints downstairs. We get them on, um, Polly's desk. Then the next morning, as we're cleaning up for the meeting, instead of my notes, then going, and it's six days later before we really get to communicate it. So, I, you know, I appreciate, uh, all the things to our attention, the more eyes and ears we have in town, the more we hear about, and the more we know, because we don't go, um, personally, don't police the town. That's not the charge of the zoning officer, but it is to respond to the issues that are raised and that are called to our attention. So, um, but because of the number right now, that's, I just wanted to let you know that that's what we're hoping to, to get done, but you can give me a couple more. Or I'll, or I'll write them down.
Um, Spruce Brook Road, you know, where, um, Nero has his farm there, heading toward Cromwell. You go around the corner, Nero's excavating, moving dirt, things like that. I know, he came in front of the commission, uh, for removing trees at one point. This is an old house.
The house that's on or on Spruce Brook, right, actually in Middletown. I called Middletown, they were sending someone out. The curve of the road.
That's Spruce Brook?
So that house, and the three across the street are in Middletown. So it was called to my attention, and I called Mark, our old planner.
Okay, that's good to know.
And he said he would be sending somebody out.
Okay, okay, cause they haven't done yet. The other thing is, I'd like to know when the parade of dump trucks are gonna stop going by my house on Orchard Road. I, I know you said he's gonna have a thousand dump trucks of soil going back and forth, and um, I'd like the nightmare to end pretty soon, if I could. I'd like to know, how close is he to his thousand truckloads of dirt?
At the site, I was thinking it was getting close, but I don't know. Um, so I'll, we'll, we'll reach out about again, we are, um, looking to update the site, the subdivision and site plan forms to include on the form, the question of the amount of fill that is related, expected, related to, based on the proposed plan, fill and removal, so that you can be cognizant of that, cause the plans are showing these amounts, but I think it's, it hasn't been really clear what it relates to in grade change. Um, layman, and, and you're not layman, but you're not engineers either, for the most part, some of you maybe.
I, I guess I just need a little clarification, cause I thought when he came in front of us, the dirt that he was gonna be bringing in there was to um, take care of the contaminated dirt. He had to put some soil on top of it, wrote a till it, so that someone come down, make everything happy, happy, and that's not happening. It looks like he's actually filling in this parcel of land. He's raising.
There was some grade changes on the plan, to the best of my recollection, to, you know, kind of even out the site. So you'd say.
Alright.
Um, but again, I didn't quantify those amounts, cause, you know, we have engineering that looks at these, at the plans for us.
So that would explain.
That's why we wanna add that question to the form, so that we can see this many cubic yards, which then can easily be translated to, you know, your typical truck, your standard truck, and Steve could help us off the.
Well, what he was bringing in in the beginning was not clean. There was sticks, there was rocks, there's cement, there was wood, there's stump. Now he's bringing in clean fill.
Categories of fill as to what's clean, and so including concrete and asphalt, you know, certain things is still clean, in, but it's not, versus topsoil, that's pure. More like pure dirt, you know, and again, it's a filler.
The stump, stumps are not part of that.
I believe stumps are, they're organic, aren't they?
Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're, you're not supposed to bury stumps.
Or sticks.
You're not supposed to bury stumps, because they rot out, and then the whole place.
Yeah, so, again, that is cognizant of that. We, um, let's see, I'm sorry, my, my page changed, and and that'll be really short. Um, I had, you'll notice in your package, you had handouts. Um, there's, um, the C, the Connecticut Federation and Planning and Zoning Agencies newsletter. Um, I think a couple of things in there are probably going to be of interest. There was also a recent, um, decision on short-term rentals this week. Decision on short-term rentals, um, I don't expect to be in the office tomorrow, but we'll try to get that out to you. It wasn't a printed thing, it was a link, so I could, you know, printing it to a link doesn't make much sense, so I'll try to email that out, so that everybody can look at that if they are interested. Um, where'd it go? Wait a minute, I lost my place. Um, short-term rental decision, um, oh, the, um, draft regional plan from the Crog was published um, for comment, and those are coming up as well, and you can get to that on the Crog site. Um, and that's the regional plan that includes Berlin, so, um, they've been working diligently on that, and have, um, um, it, you know, works a lot like ours, where, you know, comments can be made, it can be reviewed, et cetera. They, it came up today, looking forward to, and again, it was only today, so it might be better addressed at the next meeting. Um, but we do have a number of new applications. You saw the new applications. I think another one has come in since to our office, since we had the two that were on the agenda for scheduling. Um, what was the other? Demi wrote, there was another new one, or we're expecting at least two more, I think, that, you know, they've, they've talked to us. So, one of the things we did discuss, um, I did discuss with Chairman Veely today, was um, looking at October, November, and possibly even December. Currently, you have two meetings per month there. Might coincide with some, several conflicts, including holiday weeks, um, voting, um, the first November meeting, conflicts with the planning conference, which I expect both Alexa and I will be at, um, or would like to not have to drive back for the evening meeting and leave, although we have done it in the past, so it's doable. Um, but whether you, um, Chairman Veely asked me to bring up whether everyone would consider um, modifying those meeting dates, possibly readjusting a little bit, and, um, possibly one meeting in summer, all of those three months in the fall, per month, one meeting per month, not one meeting, cause you have deadlines you have to make. It may end up, given deadlines, and whatever might happen at a public hearing, that we then have to schedule a special meeting, because they get, something might get backed up. We've had those public hearings, I'm, you know, a little gun shy of December meetings. Those tend to have the last three years not been so pretty, but, you know. The what? So, um, is it reasonable if at the next meeting I have distributed what seems to make sense to me for timelines? I think what we were thinking, and I have a calendar, but we didn't, it hot off the press at like six forty-five, so we didn't make copies of it. Um, is possibly, um, adjusting the November meeting to the second week. Instead of the, the first and third, have one on the second week. That's the fourteenth instead of the seventh and instead of the twenty-first. Um, it still leaves you time with a couple of extra weeks there if, if something has to be scheduled. Um, and possibly moving the October meeting as well. At this point, I don't know if you want to look forward to doing December at the same time. I don't have those dates. We discussed. Yeah, or Monday. Yeah, yeah. Okay, and well, yeah. Yeah, and I'll have the print of this so we can actually look. And so I, but I wanted to call that to everyone's attention. If you do have conflicts or, or issues with dates and you want to share them with us, email me or Alexa and we'll, um, work with Chairman Veely to come up with suggested dates by the next meeting that the calendar can be altered officially at. Um, then I have a sticky wicket. One more sticky wicket. Um, you'll remember a long time ago, we mentioned that there had been an inquiry about, um, solar panels at, um, down on Chamberlain Highway across from Butler Street. They did go to the Siting Council and the Siting Council approved it. I think that the planning, I, well, I'm leaning towards from what I've read, although I have heard conflicting opinions that, um, review by the Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan, for screening, for, for driveway, you know, just to make sure it makes sense is still appropriate, not that their citing council approval automatically allows them to get their building permits. Again, I've had conflicting input with regard to that. Um, and suspect that if I do ask for a site plan to be submitted, will, um, you know, I may, or we may or may not hear from the applicant's attorney on it, um, as we did for the, um, um, the one at the landfill. However, um, I want your feedback on whether you think with the citing council approval, that is the correct route to take? And if that's where I should be advising them? That's the field. You can barely see it. There's a berm in front of the property as you drive along. And the, the field then is like in a ditch. It basically runs almost the length of Butler Street, but on the opposite side of Chamberlain Highway. Um, I think a utility, I didn't bring the application. It just came in. So. No. He didn't have that property and it's not the one that the greenhouses were on. It's not the one with the greenhouses. It's further down. Um, can you, you want to bring it up? No, I don't believe it's a car. Well, it possibly is, but I don't think it's one of their entities. I think it's another property owner. She's gonna pull it up. No, I think. No, that, so that's in the back. This is in front of that. Yeah. Yes. He's gonna bring it up on the screen. And again, I haven't had a lengthy conversation in a long time, um, with our corporation council on it either. I'm, we were just trying to manage it, knowing that application came in this week. We want to, you know, the, the permit. A what? Click on it. Yeah, so I believe, again, I didn't, I'm sorry, excuse me. I didn't mean to interrupt you guys. Um, so we brought up on the screen, um, and again, I didn't bring it up here, but I'm almost positive it's the parcel that the little move it around so that they could see your mouse is there, maybe click on it even, is on. So that is Tri-Tech Americas LLC. I'm, I'm, oh, look at the property card, see if we can see a sale date all the way down at the bottom, all the way down at the bottom. Oh, so it was one of Pierre's because Stone Trail, I believe, was his. And it was sold in twenty twenty-three. So I did not realize that. Or I might have the wrong parcel. But they haven't owned it. That was in eighty-eight that they sold it. So again, and those would all have been part of the better up. Um, So that's to the, I don't think it's that one. Click on the one where, where your cursor is. No, so that, that's Carabatta's that we were talking about, the military experience on that and the one immediately to its south. To the north of that. So now to the east of that in Meriden is Meriden property. That was part of that power print area. The Victoria Drive comes up through the Carabatta properties and over to there. And north of that, do the like rectangle to the north? That one, I believe that's the town. One north of it is the town. I think the one to the right is the town. Are all those up there. I, I, I wasn't here for those transactions, but it's my understanding that those how, those were the ones that were acquired at that time. So this is, um, effects out of that and go back to the one we're talking about. Which is here. And again, there's a berm all along Chamberlain Highway. There's one place where there's a gate where they, you know, typically bring in the, the equipment to hay the fields. There's another place along Chamberlain Highway on the right there, just past the south end of Butler, where they have a sometimes a barrier, sometimes not. And it's where we typically suspect that the ATVs go in. So that's a parcel that's used, um, privately in that manner, a good portion of the time. Yeah, that would have been the property to the east that was Carabatta's. So the one that was our shooting range, the one that was asked for the military experience, is that what you mean? That, that was the properties to the left that I, or east that I pointed out a minute ago. So direction? The, that, so I'm, I don't, I, I think the authority to deny is pretty slim. Is my understanding, the Siting Council has approved it, although there, you know, maybe, um, of methods of litigation the towns have are too, being told. However, um,
Well, we have.
Do think the town has some, um, may, may have a leg to, um, have some site plan input. Again, I, I, um, reflect what I hear here is screening, 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 screening from a butters and, and from passerby. So I think that would be what would be, um, site, what a site plan could accomplish.
Certain on this marine is that there's so much more property there that do it once, it's just gonna make its way happen.
Again, I think it would have to be litigation to keep it from happening at all on this site. Um, I don't know if there's ways we can, you know, I'm not the lawyer.
Do we, do we?
Anything to prevent the other sites from being developed like?
Yes, that's what we have to figure out.
Well, the first question is, do we know when the citing, when the citing, uh, council approved the applica, their application?
Was recently approved. We had had a letter started and I think it fell through the cracks of going in as far as the town's input on it. Alexa had worked on it. It was right after she started that we got the notice or right before she started, we got the notice. We then had a deadline to meet that is, and I, you did it, I proofed it. I can't find evidence that it got mailed. That was a very confusing time in our office in January. So, and, and the deadline.
Oh, it was in January?
I believe that's when we.
Then I think that, and Jennifer can, um, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the appeal period is forty-five days. In other words, if somebody, if whether the town appealed or whether some other aggrieved party appealed, it's only within forty-five days, but I could be wrong about that. So it may not even be possible.
We did a couple of months ago, we had the, the conversation and I.
Well, it's definitely not six months.
Be coming.
And we knew that our hands were tied at that.
And, but so now it's a matter of whether a site plan can be, um, submitted where you might get some input on the design. In, in my opinion, I think that's the, the, the viable course of action that doesn't result in.
Right.
We've been, we've been through with cell, uh, cell phone towers and the only thing we ended up, uh, doing is, is the mechanicals.
Right. You can't really even prevent a cell tower from coming in. There's a municipal consultation process that can happen, but that's only to say, hey, it shouldn't go here. Maybe you should go to some other site, but you're pretty much, yeah, yeah, some other city, but you're, you're pretty much done. Once, once the citing council process starts for a cell tower, you might as well just give up, to be honest with you.
Stuff is approved, they never build anyway.
Oh, really? Well, they have to have a whole plan.
They were gonna put a cell.
On the church, oh God.
I think they're done. No, the tower was approved.
Right, I believe it. They'll put one anywhere now.
Oh, so Alexa has a little bit of experience with citing council, which is why she started the first draft of the, of the letter. However, she, um, but, but my responsibility to have followed up with it and I think that that initial comment is overlooked because I can't find evidence if that's in. But she had something to add as far as, um, her experience with appeals.
In that appeals period, if we were to say something against it, the only really say we have is if it went against something like safety regulations that we have in town, but if it's just something like, we don't like it, we don't want it, it doesn't go with the character of the town. That's not legitimate reason to them. If citing council approves, we really don't have much.
What if, what if a terrorist attack, they decided to take them out? I mean, what is it? Honestly, we think about it.
Yeah.
So somebody decides I'm gonna blow this thing up. What are we putting in the air? What's, what's the, what are we doing to the, the town?
The citing.
We have almost no discretion, unfortunately. We have, the only.
Exciting people, they, they just do whatever they want.
The only, the only, the only possibility is what Alexa's talking about is there's a municipal consultation period. And believe me, most towns ignore, either ignore the letter or overlook it or don't get it for whatever reason. So that's not unusual, but even then, I mean, we could say, you know, we don't want this here or that there, but then, then they're gonna, and then they could just ignore it. I mean, they have to consider the input, but again, forget it. You might as well just throw up the white flag, to be honest with you.
Or solar panels on dump sites.
Again, I don't know what the, if, if we do, um, ask for the site plan to be, I don't know what the reaction will get from their council is. And we may get, you know, similar as we got, um, the, with the landfill. However, if this is a different situation because the landfill, we did and know about, you know, you knew about it, but we thought it was on the other side. You know, it was discussed on their other site and moved to the, you know, so, um, and, and there were agreements with the town with regard to the generation. Um, and, and the town council had worked and finance had worked with, um, New Britain on that one. So that was a little different. This in my, you know, this is a different entity. So. I, so, I was so, well, so I'm hearing I'll ask for the site plan and, and and it will work to, to get the best, the best outcome that is legally viable. Thank you. I appreciate your input and.
Now, um, I think at this point, we do have some things that we need to talk about in executive session. And I, I guess I'm representing, um, a motion to go into executive session. Uh, you need to talk about presenting litigation. So we started the plans of the COVID committee. So, and I have a bosom. The entry to the record set by Jennifer Cole, um, our staff, Warren Juicy, town planner, and guests would be, um, Mr. Snow, Pat Snow.
And Alexa.
Okay, I didn't know if you were releasing her. So you can run like a room. No, she's gonna be here. No, she'll go fine. Okay.
She's a trooper.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robyn. Do we have a second?
Can I add to that that you intend to, um, adjourn the meeting from executive session without further?
Discussion.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. Without discussion or, or emotions. Okay, just, and it'll be, I'll mark the time as nine AM and do, do we need any kind of, uh? Yeah.
Nine AM, nine PM?
Yeah. Turning off this recorder, he's gonna. So Jennifer, do you want me to call your cell phone?
That's fine.
All right.
Or I could call you, whatever you prefer.
I'll use the speakerphone in the room. Hopefully that'll work. And if it doesn't, then we'll use my cell phone.